Related to, can everybody hear me now?
Yes.
Related to the provision of services on that particular site, that will be again an open discussion. We will follow up that discussion in January with community meeting number two, but we will go back out to the community and list the feedback of our community members relative to those concepts so that we can take all of that feedback and input and develop a request for proposals and we can subsequently issue to the marketplace to qualify developers ahead of that disposition of that particular property. Just as a side note, following last night's city council, a community meeting with residents in the surrounding area of Dale property, we've got a lot of questions. We will be updating the city's website to include frequently asked questions, provide answers to many of the questions that we'll provide there, and update that website on a regular basis based on the outreach that we've received so far, including the direction that we're seeking to take.
Okay, thank you, boys. That's appreciated. Okay, with that, if I could ask, everyone please stand. Can you do this on an invitation?
Let's do it together in turn. "Comforting and sustaining God, we are thankful for your presence, especially amid these times in which we find our world torn apart by conflict and war. We are mindful of the victims of violence and terrorism and war, and we pray that your presence will be with them to offer them hope and healing and comfort. And during this month of October in which we pause to reflect upon those whose lives have been impacted by breast cancer, we offer our prayers for those who continue to fight, and we pray for your wisdom and guidance to be with those who are continuing to work for a cure. We pray that all of us do our best each and every day to work for peace, to work to listen to one another, to work for those things that build up the community. May we do the best for the common good and may we continue to allow peace to begin within each of us and as we interact with one another. Amen."
Amen. Thank you, Greg. If he's right standing, please join me in the pledge. Ready? Begin.
"I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Okay. First off, is anybody interested in reordering or adding anything to the agenda? With that, I will go ahead and open public comment and invite members of the public to address the council. And speakers are limited to three minutes, speaking once both on and off agenda items. If you're in attendance here in person, please fill out one of the speaker cards and hand it to our city clerk and we'll get you up here to the podium. Please state your name and the subject matter which you want to talk about, and please address all of your comments to the presiding officer, which is me. If you are participating via Zoom and you would like to speak, please use the raised hand icon and we'll call on you as soon as we have heard from everybody that's here in person. So we'll open the public comment and I will go ahead and start. I've got Steve Ryan.
"Good evening. My name is Steve Ryan. I live in South Park, Glendora. I wanted to make just a couple quick comments on the Dale Road project that's on the agendas. Later, I'm finding out later down the road. A couple of comments that I wanted to make is that, well first, I want to express my disapproval for this proposed development. I think there are other developments that I think we can utilize that property for. I won't go into a lot of detail just yet, but I also wanted to find out if the city had any ideas of any other developments that are being besides the... I don't want to call it a homeless shelter yet because I'm not sure that's completely identified as a homeless shelter, but that's what's being said around the community. My next comment was, I don't think there was enough information sent out to the residents in that particular area. I didn't know about this until about 30 minutes ago, I saw it on social media and I thought I needed to come up and express my view about this. The other thing I would also like to comment on is I have not seen any information from any of the council members on how they feel about this project. I don't know if I'm looking at the wrong areas, but I would really like to find out how each and every single one of you feel about this project as well. With that, I just, again, I want to convene my disapproval for this proposed development at this point."
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Hector Rivera.
"Good evening."
"Good evening. My name is Hector Rivera with Project 2911. I'm a fellow Glendorian resident and a board member for Project 2911, 2911, Cleveland, Glendora. We serve all of LA County, including as residents here in Glendora. And I just wanted to remind everybody, first of all, that we do serve, like I said, people here in Glendora, residents here. And we actually are open to the public on Fridays at 12:00 PM, even though our people show up a couple of hours earlier before we even start. But, so, you know, if you know anybody in need, we would just love to have them over. As well as this last time, you know, I came here and actually announced one of our events for an open house. I got to meet, you know, some people from the Glendora Rotary Club and we also met some people from the Glendora Walker Association. So, you know, basically, we're thankful for their support as well. And I did want to invite each one of your council members to one of our fundraisers we're having a luncheon on October 28th. It's a fundraiser that we're having at the West Glendora South Dale Country Club. And it's just one of our annual fundraisers. It's a very lovely event. We will have an auction as well. We have some football fans, we have some USC football games that we're at Glendora, as well as some USC basketball games, some Rosemary tickets, grandstand level for those who like..." So it's a fundraiser. We would love to have you guys there to support and to be there. And I do have some invitations here for you guys and anybody else who's wanting to go. I have some extra invitations as well. So it'd be lovely to have you guys. If I have... Well, just, I was going to read some stats, but that'll be fine. But thank you guys always for, I know some of you guys did attend our last event, so we're very grateful for those who did. And I know some of you tried to, but I know stuff happens, so, but thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right.
Next up? Yeah, leave the invitations and get them out. I've got, is it Taipen Chen? Yeah, please, come on.
"Good evening." "Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here to, with my neighbor, to let you guys know that we are strongly against the proposal that setting up a homeless shelter in the property that you just provided. I also attend last night's meeting at the church. And my question for you guys, have you guys decided what to do with the property yet? Or do we, as residents of Glendora, have any say in this process? Like, last night, almost everyone there is against the project. And I don't know if this has had anything can help to make the decision of what kind of a building or what kind of use is going to be on this property. And the reason that, I came here 10 years ago and I live here for almost 10 years now. And the reason we came here because it's a safe and quiet little town. And in our opinion, setting up a homeless shelter will change everything of the city. I don't know, because some of you guys says this is a pressure from the county or the state, and if you don't do it, some of you will be sued personally by the county. And I don't know if you have any law basis for this kind of a situation? Like, what basis or what kind of regulation that you guys have this kind of a pressure or way that you can be sued personally by the county? If you do, can you, like, put it on the city's website? Or can you send out this kind of the information to the residents? And also, another thing is, I'm aware that most of the neighbors that I talk to, they don't know this project. They're not aware of what happened in the city. And I hope that the city will do something that let more people know about the project. You can either send out flyers, or you can either put the flyer in utility bills, water bills, or, you know, whichever way. But I think that this is a project that affects everyone in the city. And I want, I hope you guys can let everyone, every resident here, know this issue before you guys make a decision on this."
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, I've got Joseph Zhao. Welcome, Joseph.
Thank you. "Dear Mayor and all the councilmen, my name is Joseph. I have been living in Glendora for more than 35 years. My kids all grew up here and graduated from GFS. I wish to express my opposition to propose the construction of the homeless shelter in this city. Number one, a proposed site is in close proximity to family residences. This could result in safety concern, especially for our kids. Reason two, it may cause the potential deevaluating property. Dear Mayor, I know you have been a real stakeholder for a long time, but you should know that the homeless shelter could lead to decreasing property value. So many cities nearby have refused to set up homeless shelters, Acadia, San Dimas, Rothen Heights, Diamond Bowl, and other cities as well. So please listen to the voices of the residents not to build a homeless shelter in this beautiful city. And also, I think it's possible to review their process, how do you purchase this estate? Thank you very much."
And we'll have an opportunity to answer some of these questions at the end of the public comment period. Okay, next up, I apologize if I messed the name up. Is it Durgad Kalamili? Good evening.
"You got it, Greg."
Oh, I did?
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Thanks so much for being able to speak here. I remember the same thing that my previous gentleman said. I'm a master of proposal. We've been living in Glendora for six years. My kids went to middle school and high school here. They're also going to the citrus. So we are native to this place, we feel like, and having a homeless shelter is inviting trouble. I wish we look at our position and say we want to keep the city safe. There are enough statistics out there that really the homeless shelter in a city will create more work for the city to deal with, more work for residents to deal with. It creates more stress. There should be other ways to address this issue. I feel like this is not our problem, but you guys are making it our problem. I think, well, I would want you to be touched by this. Thank you."
Okay, thank you. Next up, I've got Debbie Lopez.
"Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm also a resident here at Glendora for the past 25 years. I chose this city because I work downtown LA and I chose to live here because it was a safe, beautiful town. I was exposed downtown to all that was there, a lot of homeless, a lot of crime. And I can say that there's not enough public notice to the residents there. I just found out 30 minutes, like the other gentleman did, when a neighbor passed me a flyer that I have here. This is the first I've heard of it. I got this flyer from her 30 minutes ago. I happened to be getting my mail when I got home and she handed it to me. And I saw that this is something very urgent for me to be here. I know we all talk about homeless breeding, you know, crime and such, and it's true, they do. I was a personal witness to that downtown. It's going to create a lot of quality of life issues for us, a lot of quality of life issues that you guys aren't even exposed to. Being neighbors directly in that vicinity, just for example, and I'm going to quantify that by saying, look at the Palms Restaurant that was at Grand and Laxbury. It was there vacant for so long, we had homeless there. What we got was dumped vehicles, we had people peaking toms, we had people breaking into cars to the point where we couldn't even call the police because nothing could be done, because our criminal justice system doesn't punish. So what are we left with? To allow this to continue to happen in our neighborhoods? Because this is what's going to be there for us, not you folks, for us. We live there, we're vested there. And what I'm asking for is, what are these funds going to be utilized to purchase this property? When those funds can go back to the community? For example, go back to the emergency services, give it to the police, give it to the fires that we can have better resources for us as residents, for people who come to visit. Allow them to have that freedom to be able to walk and not have to worry about getting mud or burglar rights, their cars broken into, because nobody gets punished. And again, you know, please hear us. We're concerned. I was so concerned to come here on 30 minutes' notice. And I'm sure everybody else here has the same issues."
Thank you. Elizabeth Bruder.
"Hello, friends."
"Hi."
"My name is Elizabeth Bruder and I'm here in my official capacity as the president of the school board for Glendora Unified School District right now. And I first want to thank my colleague, Mr. Thompson, for attending our school board meeting last night. I know you all had a very important meeting, so thank you for sparing him to come and celebrate our Glendora Pipe Band members last night. They had a wonderful time in Scotland this summer and were very successful in their competitions. And we really appreciate the partnership that we have with the city. You all took the time to acknowledge these students and their wonderful accomplishments. So thank you first for sparing him that way. And then I made a board member comment last night that involved you all here, so I thought it was only fair that I made you aware, given that you were otherwise occupied. First, I want to say that the Glendora Unified School District and the city of Glendora have enjoyed a wonderful relationship and we've been partners on a lot of things. In the last couple of weeks, we have experienced a few unauthorized individuals on our school campus. And that's been an issue that I've talked to my counterparts here at the city, specifically Mr. Boyer and Mr. Thompson this year, in our two-by-two meetings. Safety for our students and our staff is probably number one, as far as the school board is concerned. And I know that you all feel the same way. We've been great partners. Anytime there has been an issue, GPD is right there, and I really want to thank them. I saw Chief Dean earlier. They are always right there supporting any of our needs. So what seems to have happened over time, though, is there's a little bit of a double standard as it relates to unauthorized individuals on our campuses. We may see somebody that we don't think belongs there at all, and we might pick up the phone and call Glendora Police Department to assist. But we may also see our next door neighbor walking their Golden Retriever around the track at God or during the school hours. And both of those people shouldn't be on our campus at those times. And so I just wanted to have the opportunity to talk to people who weren't at the school board meeting last night or didn't watch the school board meeting, we have a whole different group of people here, to ask our citizens to keep an eye on themselves and what they're doing as far as it relates to school property when the kids are in session, right? Be aware of our responsibilities that way. And then if somebody really is maybe from out of town or really doesn't belong there, ask our community members, if they see something, to please say something. Really, the priority of safety is at the utmost. So I look forward to, we have a meeting coming up on, I believe it's November 2nd, where it will be myself and Mr. Clifford and our superintendent, Dr. DeGrazia, with Mr. Boyer, Mr. Thompson, and Mr. Raymond, our two-by-two meetings, where I know we will continue to address public safety and the safety of our schools. But I sincerely want to thank you for your partnership and just bring this to your attention, that we are experiencing an uptick of people that are on the property that way. That's all I have to say. Thank you all. Appreciate you."
Next up, Gary Leichman.
"Mayor, Council, I've been a resident of Glendora for 56 years and I've always admired the fact that the city was run with an eye on safety and on the well-being of its citizens. And I'm opposed very much to the establishment of a homeless shelter. Some council members have indicated that they might be sued for opposing this homeless shelter. Well, in the United States of America, people can be sued for anything at any time. And I encourage you to have the backbone to stand up against this project for the safety of its citizens, for the drugs that it might introduce into the community, for the destruction of property values of residents who have put enormous sums of money into their homes. If other cities have council members with a backbone, which I believe we do, band with them and oppose this outrageous pushing of this project onto your citizens whom you represent, thank you."
Okay, I don't have any other public comment to present, so we can check on... Which one? You want to go first?
I submitted mine.
What is your name, Rich?
Wendy Wong.
Why don't you come up and speak and then we'll make sure you don't get retarded.
"Good evening, everyone. So, as a lot of our neighbors, I just heard this news yesterday. And I appreciate everyone coming on here and I appreciate all the board members. You guys put hard, like, I know you are trying to seek opportunity to help the Glendora City to resolve this issue. However, I think building the homeless shelter is not resolving the root cause of this issue. But as neighbors say, this will invite more issues to the community. For example, the safety, the welfare, introduce the drug, right, a lot of things. And we might, I mean, I know you guys, I sent an email to you guys today, but I know you guys are looking for some options or opinions and what we could resolve this issue. And I think we do not have enough time to be involved in this issue. So, for example, I just talked to my husband before he came here, that wrote us our options, how we can resolve this one. So building the shelter is not the root cause, it's not the, this is not the effective, productive solution to this issue. So I think all of our neighbors, we would like to stand up. I hope you can hear our voice. We can work together to find some solution, but we're just not giving the opportunity to provide our feedback. So we can work, I think everybody would like to work as a public servant or as this, I'm a resident neighbor. So I can, we can work with the local organization and social service in other cities to provide outreach programs. For example, mental health service, job training, and addictive, addiction rehabilitation. So this can be helping to resolve this root cause, root cause issue of this situation. So, as I said, I'm against, my whole family, I think all of the neighbors here are against this building, construction of the homeless shelter. This is not the effective, productive way to use the money, the funding for this city. So I'm against this one. So hopefully you can hear our voice and all of my voice. And I, we're here, I were here to support you guys. And I know all of us would like to make this problem resolved, make it better, but this is not one of the ways that we would like. So I hope you can take our opinion into consideration. Thank you so much."
Okay, thank you. Just an FYI, I did have your card, so it was up here. I just missed it. I apologize for that.
No problem.
Okay, next, Rich Gill. Welcome, Rich.
"Good evening. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Rich Gill and I've pretty much been an advocate in several cities, from San Dimas, La Verne, Hostia Heights, Claremont. Many of these cities are dealing with issues that you're dealing with now. One of the reasons I know about Glendora is, one of the first meetings I attended was when Glendora was dealing with six acres of land that the state said will become low income. And I was hoping that you would shed some information on that. These parcels of land that we're dealing with, regardless of what city you're in, it's hard with some of these companies. of these companies. In San Dimas and La Verne, we're dealing with National Core. In Claremont, they're dealing with Jamboree. And with Hostia Heights, they're dealing with a company called Works. We are combining our efforts to fight this situation to the best of our abilities. It is not just a city council issue. It is a state and a county issue. And that's the one thing that you have to understand. We have to unite to fight this on a higher level. And that's what we're doing. Because united, we can make a difference. The homeless issue is everywhere, and it will only get worse as time goes on. And we have to understand that. You are not alone, because there are cities around you that are fighting it. So, please understand, and please know that we are working together to try to solve this issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, that was my last one, unless I missed anybody else? Is there anybody on Zoom that is raising that time?
There is no one on Zoom. And I do want to remind you that if you want to make a public comment in regards to that agenda item, now is your time to provide that public comment.
Okay, if there's nothing else, I'll go ahead and close public comment.
And, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Yes.
We did receive one correspondence related to agenda item number twelve. It will be incorporated in the agenda packet, and has been distributed to city council, and will be available to the public.
Thank you. And just so everybody knows, item number twelve has to do with sign ordinances, so that'll be included. So, you know, we'd like to address some of the issues here. I would like to start by thanking Elizabeth for coming by and talking to us. I think it's important for the community to know that the city of Glendora, the police department, the school district, all work very, very closely together to make sure that we keep our schools and our kids safe. One of the things that we've had here in Glendora for a number of years is the fact that our schools are relatively open. They're not as close as they are in other communities. And so, as residents, we have a responsibility to make sure, especially during school hours, that the schools remain secure and safe as much as they can. And so, I do appreciate Elizabeth coming by. I do want to address a couple of things, and I'm going to ask Adam to speak up as well. The one thing that a number of people mentioned that you were concerned, because you haven't had enough time to digest this, and at last minute, you know, notices and things that are going out. You need to understand that what we're doing right now is, we are starting with this process. So, we're nowhere near making decisions as far as what is going to be happening. Assistant city manager shared with you one of the conversations we had in closed session had to do with next steps. And so, we will be having additional updates with more information as to exactly what we are dealing with and other processes. There will be additional community meetings. And your voices are important. That's the reason we are having the community meetings and inviting everybody to get involved. We live here in Glendora too. Our kids, our grandkids all live here, so we want to make sure that this community stays safe. So, we as a community are going to come to a solution. But we do understand that homelessness is an issue that we have to address. And we've got to figure out the best way to do that moving forward. So, Adam, if you could just maybe share a little bit about, oh, I also wanted to address, Rich, your comment on San Jose. Because the San Jose property, again, just like so many things, is a long process. So, we've been giving updates to the people that live in the neighborhood over by the San Jose property, and have been in constant communication with that neighborhood. But where we are at that point, we went through the process that had required by the state via the Surplus Lands Act to offer that property to low-income housing developers. And we were not able to come to an agreement with any low-income housing developer that we felt met the needs of our community. So, we have already gotten permission from the Housing and Community Development, Housing and Community Development Department of the State of California, to go ahead and proceed with market rate developers. The property, because it is surplus land owned by the city, it's required by state law that it is going to have to be made available for housing. So, something is going to be built there. We'll continue that conversation with that neighborhood with the rest of the community as well. But right now, we are at the process that we are looking at market rate developers and trying to decide who's going to come up with the best project that's going to fit with that neighborhood. So, these conversations are important. We do listen, and we will continue this conversation. But Adam, if you could share a little bit more about some of the intricacies of what we're dealing with, or this conversation?
Good evening, everyone. Lots of new faces in the audience tonight. We've missed you. We've been here for many, many years. It's good to see some of you. Wanted to take a brief step back and sort of talk about the conversations that the city council has had, and how we ended up purchasing the Dale Road property to begin with. As many of you may know, there is a landmark case in the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals that occurs in 2019 called Martin v. Boise, which sets this precedent forward that if the city's not able to offer shelter, cannot enforce its anti-camping and other ordinances. Really appreciated the comments this evening from speakers that talked about public safety. Should be noted that the city of Glendora, when the new DA took his seat in that position, was one of the first cities to reach out and say, how do we, how do we help you prosecute quality-of-life crimes? From trespassing to drugs to petty theft, both juveniles and adults, how do we help address them? Some of the directives of the DA sort of allowed this laissez-faire type of attitude towards some of those quality-of-life crimes, which have impacted all of us who live in the city. I live here too. My two children attend local schools here. Subsequent to 2009, the city saw an increase of its homeless population from about forty to sixty-five, then eighty-five, then a hundred and forty-four. In fact, the city takes the temperature of its residents in a community survey, which is a scientific survey done, the city's done it periodically every couple of years since 2011. You can find those on the city's website at cityofglendora.org/community surveys. In 2019, something happened for the very first time in the city's history, which is more than a quarter of the residents thought that one singular issue was the top quality-of-life concern, and that was homelessness. Subsequent to COVID, and additional changes in case laws surrounding homelessness and other quality-of-life issues, the city has updated its community survey, and those results were published in 2022, which also listed homelessness as the number one concern in the city. The city has a multi-year strategic plan. The most current one was adopted in April of this year. One of the items is inclusive of homelessness. City council has taken the attitude of what gets funded, gets done, which is why in our annual budget, we include spending both in the general fund, Measure E, housing set-aside funds, specifically to help affordable housing, and listed addressing homelessness and updating a strategic element towards homelessness in that, in that plan. In fact, if you stick around this evening, we will give you an update on where we're at on that strategic plan, which is four months in from its start date in July. We have had a number of conversations on homelessness starting in 2019. Based on a community survey on homelessness, we knew the residents were looking at a multi-agency, localized approach to help deal with homelessness. All of you were right. The city's never had to deal with homelessness on a large scale before. But both the state and county have gotten rid of their responsibilities and placed more responsibilities on cities. With Measure E, the city's helped fund additional services, both in the police department, our community services, and human services division. You may see our outreach band dragging around. We have an agreement with LA KATA. I'm not sure how many of these are back there, but the city of Glendora has issued a guide and resources for homelessness, where there's food pantry, there's various options. The city's taken its obligations very, very serious. We've actually acquired eight emergency shelter beds through our agreement with LA KATA to help us enforce quality-of-life ordinances, but also get people off the street that need to do so. During COVID, we funded our own money and funded homeless individuals staying in hotels and motels to get them off the street. We didn't do the home key approach, because our attitude at a city level was always to help our local Glendorans first. We didn't want to have to take other individuals from other agencies. It was really important for us to move forward in that approach. While many of you are here for the first time this evening, the homelessness conversation and affordable housing has been before the city council no less than fifteen times in public meetings since 2018. The meeting last night was posted on the city's agenda. We actually handed flyers to the adjacent neighborhoods, and we've been in contact with many of those residents for a periodic basis about this project. The city council, as the mayor stated last night, Councilman Al was stated, is we don't have a finalized project. We don't know, the entire thing, I think it's pretty safe to say from some of the feedback, the city doesn't have intentions to build a two-acre homelessness facility. The city will look at affordable housing or other components in that area. But if you go to the city's website, cityofglendora.org/daleroad, you will see the presentation from last night. You will have a better understanding of what affordable housing actually is. A low-income family in LA County, a family of four qualifies under a hundred and ten thousand dollars a year. As housing has become more expensive, it's created another challenge as it relates to finding affordable housing for individuals to live in the communities they want to do so. So, when we sit here and we talk about, and the council does, and from a staff level, and we have these conversations, it's not been an overnight thing. In fact, it's been many, many years of very public conversation. So, as Moises indicated, and I know he's back there, and I want to ask him to come through all the people, but we will have an update on homelessness in December. We'll have public discussions on options for the state in January. We'll have another public meeting around the same time with some additional council direction in February. So, we're a long way away from having a decision. But through this process, that we hope you take the chance to become educated on the topic and what the city is already doing. We're spending a million dollars a year more now than we were three years ago in dealing with homelessness. And that's from cleanups of encampments. That's from additional police officers in our community impact team. That's from additional staff in our human services team, all to address this problem that cities have never had to address before. We agree with you. It's a quality-of-life issue. It's a challenge. It's a public safety issue. We're all on the same page. It is a difficult topic, and not one that I think we'll be able to address overnight, but we plan to do it together. So, very much appreciate you coming in. Thank you for allowing me, Mayor, the lengthy response. A lot of new faces here. Always great to talk about what we're doing, and happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, no, appreciate it, Adam. And again, just stay tuned, stay informed, and please continue this conversation, and together, we'll figure something out by the time we get to the finish line of this. But it's a long way away. We shared last night that we're probably looking at two to three years before anything starts to be built down there. So, it will be a long conversation before we get to get to anything. So, that is it for that. I'll bring it back to council for any additional statements. Lightman?
So, the mayor and Adam, city manager, eloquently explained what's going on. This has not been an overnight situation. The whole key to this is for us to listen to what the community wants, what they don't want, and to come to some solution, because we are faced with an issue with homelessness, affordability. The state is very challenged to live in because of the cost of living and things of that nature. So, I put my email addresses on the website. If you folks do WeChat, I'm on WeChat. I can be part of whatever group we have with that as well. Our job here is to listen and collectively come with some solutions. This is a point of fact, and we started out, I think around COVID time, was somewhere around two hundred homeless, I guess we counted roughly, in the city. We're hovering right around a little over eighty homeless folks. About half of those folks have connections here with Glendora. They are, were part of the community at one point in time, and they found themselves to be homeless. So, they are part of our community. And we need to find some solutions to work through that process. As far as the, you know, the danger and quality-of-life issues here in the city, homeless folks are in and around everywhere. They're not just necessarily congregating in one area. We have high concentration in certain areas, but they are throughout the entire city. So, if you think that it doesn't matter, you know, if they're in a transitional facility or affordability facility, they're everywhere. And, you know, we need to deal with the issue. Every city is dealing with this issue. The state has made things more challenging for us. They, as Adam has mentioned, they have given up a lot of their responsibility, even though they've put a lot of money towards it. But there's other solutions they can do, and they have chosen not to. And the same with the county as well. So, again, we're here to listen. As the mayor had mentioned, it's a long process. So, please reach out, and let's come together with a solution or solutions to make this happen. Something has to happen. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. David?
Thank you. First, I'd like to call out and recognize some voiceouts in the audience. I can smell a citizenship and American, it's a community merit badge project being looked at. What a night to come and learn about civic events, huh? I'm a council for that, so I recognize it. Good job. I echo, I went to last night's meeting at the church to learn about the Dale Road project, to learn. I took my ears, I listened, I heard, great comments. But I think, as it's been shared, we're just developing. This is in its infancy. We don't have a plan. We have a dream and a desire. The desire is to take the people that Michael shared are in our community everywhere already. So, we're not inviting and bringing that this solution isn't going to gain more out of our project. It's going to help us live with and work with, and help cure the problems of some of the people that need the help. So, please be constructive, bring it along as a solution, and let's figure out, how can we not don't do? Let's figure out what to do. Lastly, I reported a couple of meetings ago on communication and efforts with the county of Los Angeles to help us in a quality-of-life effort. Again, work on our Arrow Highway corridor that is adjacent to the city of Glendora and a couple of other communities. Had some encouraging reports on that. Sad to report, we've had a little reverse action on it, so we're being slow. The county's went into a couple of hiccups, and so their timeline has been extended. The efforts are not ceasing. They won't persist, and I am sure we will prevail in helping that area and corridor also. So, please support, keep your ears open. Let's move together as a team, and we can make this the community we all move to. And we came here for a good reason. That reason will stay. Thank you.
Good thinking, Mayor. Karen?
Nothing to add, but that's a good thing.
Yeah, I would echo everything that's been said. I hope that you'll all know that we are here to listen. We're here to engage. Nothing has been planned. There's no plans. There's not a builder. There's nothing. So, stay engaged. As Adam has said, there's going to be some other times that we're going to talk. But it's a problem that we have to acknowledge, we have to work on. I think that Debbie Lopez said it right. There's, you know, housing is one piece, but there's all kinds of other parts of this that need to be addressed. And if you have an answer for us, we'd love to hear it, because we want to try to answer this issue. So, give us a chance. And I think that we, working as a team, are going to come up with something good. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Madam. And just to reiterate again, stay engaged, keep the conversation going, and together, we'll work this out to make a decision as best for the entire community. So, thank you, everybody. Okay, at this point, I'd like to invite Chief Egan to join us. Where are you at, chief?
Sorry about that. I was being respectful of everyone's space. Good evening, all. Good evening, Mayor, city council members, members of the audience. October is Uh October is breast cancer awareness. I appreciate all of you wearing different shades of pink. Kudos and celebratory to you. Um I'm here as the model, they are here as the spokespersons. Um I am modeling our twenty twenty-three corridor police department patch. I'm packing it. You need to buy them, uh buy as many as you can. And I'm going to hand it over to Julie to talk, Julie and Deanna, to talk about our fundraisers coming up this month and all the things we're doing in furtherance of our mission to fight cancer and breast cancer awareness.
Good evening, honorable mayor and council members. Um each October, we turn our patches peak in support of breast cancer awareness as a part of the Pink Patch Project. Uh it's a campaign, a campaign that's worldwide now, and all of the law enforcement agencies and other government agencies participate. They design their patches. We have anyone that we design every single year. And it's to bring awareness to breast cancer. Um it's been proven that early detection is key for breast cancer. It affects both women and men. So we're here to spread the word, uh invite our community to participate and support the project. Uh we have some events coming up that you can help with, and I'll turn it over to Deanna.
Hello. Okay, so we have three different ways that you guys can donate. The first one is in our station. It's called Coins for a Cure. If you have any, who's changing all, there's a big, you can stay at our station, you can donate off. If you bring your kids, we have a limited edition sticker for them. The second one is on October twenty-sixth. It's a fitness night over at Active Seven Fit. It's ten dollars, and all the proceeds go to Cancer Research. And the third one is on October nineteenth at Spaghetti Ed's. It's our Pink Patches and Pasta. You can come in, eat some pasta, you can donate our merch. All the, all the donations go to Cancer Research. And our Pink Patches and T-shirts are available in the lobby of the Glendora Police Department. And if you'd like to come in and purchase one, we're there Monday through Saturday, seven AM to six PM. Thank you for having us.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate you hearing us out, supporting us.
Okay, now everybody pull me up with these. Make sure you reach out to these guys. Um Adam, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Uh yes, I'm very stupidly quick. I'm going to be completely full of this slide. Okay. Uh good evening again. Uh just a quick update. Uh as many people may know, there's a train coming to town, the Gold Line, otherwise known as the A Line. The two pictures here that you're looking at are essentially the northeast corner of Vermont and Route sixty-six. Uh on the left, you will see uh a metro map that was provided. On the right, you will see the Foothill Gold Line Construction Authority map. Um as was predicated when the Gold Line Station was being developed, um there would be some potential development opportunities either through Metro or the Gold Line Construction Authority. As it turns out, uh the Gold Line Construction Authority purchased some additional property above and beyond what was needed uh for the parking facility for the future Gold Line Station. Uh both of these agencies have listed the properties which, as you will know, overlap here. One is a subset of the other uh through future development. As public agencies in the state of California, both the Gold Line Construction Authority and Metro must go through the state's Housing and Community Development Department, otherwise known as HCD, to go through the Surplus Land Act. Uh Surplus Land Act is how public agencies must uh dispose of land, either through long-term lease or sale for future development. Couple of things I just wanted to make sure that we were aware of. Uh many businesses in this area have been made aware that these properties were going to be sold. The city and the city council uh have been made aware that these two measures are moving forward. Uh as it's part of the state's potential uh surplus land act, there would be an affordability component of uh of between fifteen and twenty percent on any housing development in this area. This area is zoned for thirty units to the acre on housing in three stories. Uh this, this represents the most uh dense uh or intensified development of any area in the city. Uh largely done to help the city meet the state's RENA numbers, which are housing targets the state provides every agency that we must zone for. I think a couple of really important notes is neither Metro or the Gold Line Construction Authority has local control over the city's zoning, which means? The city? The city will be a partner in any development that does occur here. It's also important to note, uh the city has received a grant from Metro for some visioning in this area. And including the city's strategic plan uh is development or uh future development of this area in line with both the council priorities and the community needs. So uh if you see any publicity on this, uh the city is aware. You can visit our website for more information, and as always, you can ask staff and have them answer any questions.
Okay, I appreciate the update, Adam. And uh, you know, just to clarify to those of you that um we're here about what else we're dealing with. There's a lot of things going on right now that uh some that are out of our control, and some are trying to stay within the state guideline. I would like to address one comment that you made, because sometimes people hear something, and they're to take away. You mentioned that we, the city will be a partner in what happens with these properties. Just want to start, we're, we're not involved in whatever the development is of the property. By being a partner, it means we will have some say over what is developed of those properties. But they uh, they are currently owned by the Construction Authority, and they will be sold to developers. We will have some, some jurisdiction over what ends up being built there.
Yes. The only other update I have this evening, uh we received notice late today. Route sixty-six, where the bicompromised line for the overpass, uh that access will be closed in both directions. The city's pushed that out on its media notifications. As you may have noticed, if you've driven that underpass, there's quite a bit of concrete work that needs to be completed. They're going to do that this evening. So the city, we made it aware, we've let all the appropriate parties know, but that will be occurring this evening from six P, from eight PM to six AM tomorrow.
Okay, so it's closed now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um next, we've got uh into our special items. Item number three, a presentation of the San Gabriel Valley Cog on Programs and Initiatives. I understand Community Relations, Ricky Choi, and uh so Manager of Transportation. Welcome, Ricky.
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. My name is Ricky Choi. I'm Director of Government Communications with the San Gabriel Council of Governments. Um I'm actually joined here tonight uh with my colleagues, Roy Choi, uh Manager of Transportation, no relation. Uh along with Stephanie Hernandez, who's actually a resident of the city of Glendora. So great to be here today. I'm actually a huge fan of Donut Man, so I'm really excited. I'm really excited that my work has brought me here to the great city of Glendora tonight. Um tonight, um I will provide a uh brief update uh on the COG programs and initiatives. Um and also highlight some of our accomplishments of uh of the past year and some of our plans for the upcoming year. Uh but first, I wanted to also take the opportunity to um, there we go. Want to take this opportunity to um thank uh Mayor Boyer, as well as Councilman Allois, who are serving as delegates on the governing board. Um and also just want to also mention that Councilman Allois is a member of the E N R, an M G, Environment and Natural Resources Committee. Mayor Boyer is also on our um uh homelessness committee. Uh Councilman Davis is on our homelessness committee. Um and uh I believe um.
Regional Housing Trust.
Yes, that's right. Uh Mayor Boyer is also a member of the Regional Housing Trust. And uh Councilmember Davis, it was great seeing you last week at the, at the Civic Build Event in the City Ballpark. So um oh, and I have to say, um Councilmember um Rinaldo is also on our Water Committee. So thank you for, for serving um on the COG in those capacities. And staff is actually also very active with the COG. Um just wanted to mention that Transportation Manager, Stu Matier, uh serves on our Transportation Committee. Um and our, and, and her city manager. Uh it's Adam Raymond, that serves on our City Managers' Stare Committee. So um a lot of participation from the city of Glendora, so we're appreciative of that. So what is the COG and what do we do? Um as you know, the COG is a joint powers authority. Uh we were formed in nineteen ninety-four, and we represent thirty, thirty-one cities in the San Gabriel Valley, including the city of Glendora. Uh two, at least, counties, boroughs, or area districts, uh S D one, S D five, uh along with three municipal water districts. The thirty-four member uh government board provides guidance, sets a policy for the agency, and each member city is represented by a delegate and or its ultimate. And so the COG is a sub-regional uh government agency uh that works closely with our uh San Gabriel cities to foster cooperation and collaboration um to address a lot of the regional um issues and key challenges that our region faces. And so our primary mission is really to collaborate on projects um of regional significance, um forge consensus on a number of issues that impact our regions and cities of, and, and San Gabriel Valley, and advocate um for regional solutions uh and that will enhance the quality of life for the one point five million residents uh in the San Gabriel Valley. And so we manage and operate a number of, of uh regional programs uh that serve our member agencies with the goal of meeting our common needs, uh providing local answers, improving the quality of life, and putting our neighbors first. Meeting common needs. Uh the COG provides funding and technical assistance uh to support um and, and provide regional solutions and implement programs to help our cities address a number of complex issues. Um we at the COG really put an emphasis on uh regional strategies um that support our unique and diverse cities, uh cities such as the city of Glendora. Our program maximizes local dollars uh to help each of our cities comply with a number of state laws um and regulations that, that might not come with uh the, the support that it needs uh to implement from Sacramento. And so we find innovative solutions um to address the common needs of the cities in our sub-region. Uh one example of such program is our Food Recovery Program, uh which Glendora is a participant of. And if you, and as, as you are aware, S B thirteen-three, um it requires cities um to do a number of things. Requires cities to do inspections of grocery stores, restaurants, and other facilities to ensure that edible food is uh not being thrown away, but instead donated. And so with the COG's Food Recovery Program, uh we're doing just that for the cities who are participating, um and we're getting this done. And so this is one example of a program um that is really focused on um bringing the cities together and maximize resources uh to help the city comply with uh a number of these state mandates. Next, there's a goal of implementing local answers. Um each community, as you know, has its own unique needs. Uh the COG provides innovative solutions and support uh to address those needs. Uh part of it is working to secure um state and federal funding uh to support these locally based uh solutions and programs uh to meet the challenges that we share um in this region. And so what you see here, a number of photos, are actually three examples of, over the past year, um of federal and state funding that we were able to secure for our SGB Works Workforce Development Program, which is focused on uh providing supportive services um and on the job training for average youth, as well as persons experiencing homelessness, um as well as for our SGB Care Mobile Crisis Response Program. And that is a mobile uh crisis program uh that's designed to provide an alternative uh mobile response to law enforcement for those who are experiencing a mental health crisis. And moving on to the goal of improving the quality of life uh for those in the San Gabriel Valley. Improving the safety, health, and uh livability of San Gabriel residents is so important. And what you can see here is a list of all the different programs um that the COG is implementing to try to uh achieve this. And including the uh Go SGB Bike Share Program, uh which is actually a subscription-based e-bike uh program that offer residents uh a month-long subscription um to check out an e-bike um and uh see if this is something that they would like to continue using in the long run. And so it's, it's a program that uh that attempts to get people out of their cars and into e-bikes. Um and the city is also a part of the uh Neighborhood Coyote Program uh that promotes coyote safety and provides outreach services and education for residents uh that can monitor coyotes. But one project that um I wanted to highlight, of course, is the East San Gabriel Sustainable Multimodal Improvement Project. It's a mouthful, uh which is a series of first and last mile improvement projects, um uh plus system improvements and enhancements as well. Uh they encompass the communities in the East San Gabriel, uh cities of Azusa, Claimon, Covina, Glendora, La Verne, Ramona, and San Dimas. And so the East San Gabriel Smith Program, for short, is going to provide critical transit connections for families, uh families as well as commuters and individual riders, and build a comprehensive, efficient, cohesive, and state uh multimodal transportation network that will transform the region um and, and provide connections to vital services, employment centers, schools, um and other recreational facilities. And I think, of course, also support uh the investments in the uh um the eventual Metro A, um or formerly Gold Line uh improvements. So these improvements for the city of Glendora mean first and first mile, last mile improvements at um on Glendora Avenue, as well as uh Foothill Boulevard. That'll mean some urban trails, improvements at Little and Big Dalton Wash. Um and the item on the, on, on the project that we're very excited about, the uh the Glendora People Movement Project, um will be considered later this evening. And so the project um will significantly uh improve connectivity, enhance safety, and provide a coherent and active transportation network. Uh they'll, they'll capitalize on the improvements uh that you will see uh along the corridor, along the Light Road Corridor, and uh reduce the tram duty gap between the neighborhood city. So we're thrilled to see the progress the city has made on this project, um and we look forward to a successful partnership. And finally, uh the concept of putting our neighbors first. And we want to make sure and ensure that all of our neighbors, especially our most vulnerable neighbors, um have access to homes, to jobs, and have the care that they need. And uh one example of that, um a program that we're, we're expiring at the moment is the Broadband Needs Assessment and Strategic Plan. Um and that includes the city of Glendora. Um and the idea is to quote the digital vibe for un-served and underserved uh communities. And we're trying to assess that and ensure that there's, um there's digital equity so that all of our neighbors um have access to reliable uh and affordable broadband internet service. Now we just want to highlight uh some of our accomplishments um and the success that we've had um so with uh some of our programs this past year. Uh we've been very fortunate um and grateful for the support that we've uh been given from the federal, state, and county government. Uh in, in the past year, the COG has been able to successfully secure nearly seventy-five million dollars in federal, state, and county funds uh that will support our regional programs, initiatives, uh that serve our member cities. Uh we're very proud and excited uh to share some of the highlights and the successes in our program uh this past year. And they include um serving over twenty-eight hundred clients in our regional homelessness programs and city private programs. Um as I mentioned, uh we relaunched the Reimagine Go SGB Bike Share Program. Again, um enhancing mobility um in a, in a portable and sustainable way. Uh we put in a hundred and five million um housing for individuals and families experiencing homelessness in San Gabriel Valley. Uh we recently broke ground on the fifty-seven sixty uh Confluence Project, uh that will improve uh safety, address the nation's seventh worst, and the state's worst, truck bottleneck. And we have also recently completed uh the Fairway Race Separation Project in the city of Industry, in the community of Royal Heights, helping to better uh connect the San Gabriel Valley and uh improve roadway safety. And, and finally, we also launched our SGB Works Workforce Development Program, as I mentioned, and it has supported um fifty-one participants so far. We're really proud and excited to highlight some of the, some of our programs that we're planning this upcoming year as well. Uh we're looking to continue to improve safety in the region uh with the construction of the Trimble Canyon Road Race Separation Project, which is in the city of Industry and the community of Heights, as well as the Montebello Corridor Race Separation Projects. Uh we're going to complete the San Gabriel Transit Feasibility Study, which is focusing on improving mobility and transit um in the region and identifying and building um the infrastructure to support the transit needs of the residents in the region to take them to, to work, to school, um and back home in a state-led mission manner. And we also will be working with a number of nonprofit partners in the San Diego Valley to establish three regional food recovery hubs, and that will help reduce food insecurity in the region and feed our neighbors in need. And we also plan to complete sixty home energy reviews as part of our Efficient SGB Program to help residents save up another electricity bills. We'll also look to expand our SGB Care Program to three additional cities. And finally, we're going to complete the improvements at the renovations of the Denver Park Golf Course that's related to the fifty-seven sixty Confluence Project and reopen the golf course to the public. And so that, oops, that in the nutshell is a, I guess, a condensed little version overview of the COG's programs, initiatives, and the plans for the upcoming year. And just want to take this off for you to thank the council for having me here today again. And of course, express our sincere gratitude to city staff, who have been great partners and great to work with throughout this entire time. So the COG continues to look forward to be a partner with the city of Glendora, as we work together to address our common needs and challenges in hopes of enhancing the quality of life in the San Diego Valley. So with that, that completes my presentation, and I'll maybe have to answer any questions again.
Well, we really appreciate the update. You guys are extremely busy. We always appreciate the support of the COG and everything that's done by you and your staff and our ability to be involved as well. Does anybody have any questions?
They give me once a month for all my questions.
You got all your questions to answer? Anybody else? Okay, well, I guess we're good to go. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you so much.
Okay, item number four is strategic plan update.
Good evening again. Thank you very much. Try something a little new tonight, see if we can mess this up. So here we go. As we indicated earlier, here is. There we go. All right. So as I indicated earlier in a previous update, the city council has undertaken its new strategic plan. It was approved in April, went into effect July first. We're four months into that, a little bit under, a little over four months, I suppose, and wanted to provide all of you with an update. Typically, this update takes place via a PowerPoint. We want to share with you a little bit of the more integrated look on how we're taking our strategic plan and using it as a work plan for city staff. So first and foremost, what I'm showing you this evening, in talking with Sam, our IT director, we're going to try to make a version of this available to the public so they also can have some more granular look at what we're doing. So our plan adopted for two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-five is inclusive of seven goals. Within those seven goals are forty-nine objectives. Included in those forty-nine objectives are currently a hundred and eighty-eight unique tasks. Those hundred and eighty-eight tasks are largely not minor things, but large things. A lot of them will come to city council. As you'll know, in your staff reports, we have a strategic planning section where you know the goal and that we're undertaking. So as is our first time, let's go through at a high level. We'll be back before in January with a little more robust look. So implementing a strategic economic development, maintaining financial stability and stability and sustainability, enhancing employee development and retention, enhancing and modernizing the organization, improving and maintaining infrastructures and facilities, implementing strategic homeless solutions, and enhancing community engagement and presence, both of which you saw earlier this evening on both of those, are the seven goals. So as we delve in, let's just use Implement Strategic Economic Development here. When we were to click on this, it'd open up a new page in our planner, which breaks out all the objectives. So if you were to click over here, you would see that this is updating our economic development plan. We have various tasks associated with that. If I scroll down on this, oh boy, mess this up here. I'll take my words for it. If you look on Objective Three, for example, which is completing village projects, you'll see at the bottom is two completed tasks. So now this is formatted a little more difficult to move down, but you can click on this, and it'll show you what our two completed tasks are, which is the Mida Avenue improvements, which we all love, and outdoor dining program, which we have the permits up and running. So we're working on those. In a nutshell, of the hundred and eighty-eight unique tasks, we've completed eighteen of those, ninety-one or a little more than fifty percent are underway. Forty percent of those tasks are not there, but wanted to share with you some things really briefly here, the summary tool that we would use. Let's go. The Zoom taskbar covers everything up top, so. What's that? There we go. All right. So as we go here, there is an analytics page that we can look at. That can show us a little more detail on when things have been looked at, when things have been addressed. We'll click out of this. We go into Goal One again here, and we go to the charts. We can look at all of the various items that are underway. You can find out in this goal, we have not started fourteen, sixteen are in progress, and seven have been completed. We can go through the individual items to show them. Highlighting a couple of the important factors, we've had Economic Development Workshop before the city council. We talked about economic development leakage. We've also completed some of the village tasks. As it relates to the housing cycle, some big wins for us. We've received certification on our housing element. We've undertaken several of the other rezoning, which are currently underway. We have some surplus property that we talked about earlier, Mayor. You gave an update on San Jose. That's reflected over here under Objective Six, Complete Disposition of City Property. And just to provide the public some additional information, if I were to click on any of these tasks here, it brings up some additional information. It shows who the task is assigned to. It gives a brief update on the surplus, working forward at fifteen percent affordability levels. It talks about a median priority and that is in progress. So a little more granular detail, when we return to you in January, we plan to have some more reporting functionality. We plan to be able to have all of you utilize the system, but just wanted to briefly share through the first four months again, of the hundred and eighty-eight tasks, more than half are already underway for this next two-year period. About ten percent of those are completed, and forty percent of those are waiting to kick off. So happy to answer any questions, though we have a full agenda this evening, but wanted to share with you a little more how this is engaged in the work plans of your department directors and their city staff this evening.
Thank you for that. Any questions? Okay. How long has this been up on our website?
This is actually on our intranet. We're working to get it on our website. So no pressure, Sam, back there. But this is really what our ultimate goal was. We had a three-year work plan, but this really provides more granular detail, and not only can people see the staff members assigned to them if they have questions, but they can also keep track of where we're at. So really important for us moving forward that we're able to have this level of visibility into what the council's asked us to take on.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, next up, we have our consent calendar. Item consent calendar will be enacted by one motion without individual discussion, unless anybody would like to pull any items. How many items, five to nine?
A second.
We have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Fiedler?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Bojan Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor Boyer?
Yes.
Motion carries by zero.
Okay, appreciate it. Item number ten, Executive Memorandum of Agreement between the city of Glendora and the San Diego Valley Council of Governments for six point six million dollars in funding for the Glendora People Movement Project. Stephen Matia to report. Welcome, Stephen.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city council. I'll wait for my.
Get us off the screen.
Yes.
From scratch.
Also, not my good side, so.
We've just kind of laid the foundation for you.
Yes.
Paved the path for you to travel on. There we are.
All right, thank you. So the item before you is to execute the memorandum of understanding with the San Diego Valley Council of Governments for our portion of the projects, the name, the East San Gabriel Sustainable Multimodal Improvements Project. As part of that, this is really the funding for the city's People Movement Project. I'll describe what that is, the structure of the COG's MOA with the city, the funding and schedule for each of the projects, and then our next steps. So the People Movement Project are ten miles of active transportation improvements across the city. They consist of first, last mile access improvements to the future Glendora A-line station, and also urban trails, which are walking biking paths along our three flood control channels in the city. In total, there's a twenty-one million dollar investment. To date, we have secured nearly twelve million dollars in grants and about one point four, one point five million in committed CIP funds. This is a map that shows you with the full buildout of ten miles. This is where we got that twenty-one million dollars from, and as I mentioned, that's the breakdown. We were tentatively awarded the six point six million from the city of the COG, which is the subject of the MOA tonight. We received five million dollars from the Congressional earmark process from Congress Committee Two, and the city set aside one point five million in CIP funds. A year ago, the city went through a priority phasing process to look at what would come first in these projects. What was adopted is Scenario One, which originally included Glendora Avenue, Little Dalton Wash, and the San Dimas Wash. Since we received the Congressional earmark, we're able to accelerate Fuddel Boulevard into fit into Scenario One. This brings this Scenario One total cost to fourteen point two million dollars, and there is a gap of one and a half million dollars. So what is the People Movement look like? The next three renderings are the San Dimas Wash extension. This is at Sunflower and Gladstone. These are the improvements through Gladstone Park. And this is near the end of the trail at Grand and Carroll Highway. The Glendora Avenue project goes from Route sixty-six to the Village at Fuddel. This is the existing intersection of Ada and Glendora. And here, the conceptual improvements. This is looking south on Glendora Avenue, and these are the conceptual improvements. Same here, this is the crossing at Carroll and Glendora. And this is what the enhanced crosswalks and better signs of the bridge by. And this is at the intersection of Fuddel and Glendora. And this is what the protected intersection and enhanced crosswalks. On Fuddel Boulevard, this is at Grand, actually, this is interesting now, this is what it looked like before the bridge was completed. So now with the bridge completed and with some of the first last mile improvements, you'll see here. And looking eastbound on Fuddel. Again, some of the lane reline into the bike lane. So what is the role of the MOA? The MOA governs the relationship between the city of Glendora and the COG for disposition of funds and for project delivery. So this is managed, so the COG under this arrangement will undertake all the procurement, the design, construction of these projects, as well as the administration of the funds. The COG's fee for that is about ten percent of our grant, so six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Under this MOA, the city is responsible for providing timely technical feedback and support during outreach in the design process and construction, and we're also required to pay our local match as stipulated in the funding. So in terms of schedule and funding, we're looking here, this is the San Dimas Urban Trail. It has a little bit behind due to the delays from the Army Corps and LA County permitted project, but we're still looking to start construction hopefully later in twenty twenty-four. On Glendora Avenue, once we have the MOA executed, we can start working with the COG to procure a design consultant to environmentally clear and design Glendora Avenue, with construction starting in twenty twenty-six. Same with Little Dalton Wash. This is our pretty aggressive schedule based on our experience now with the Army Corps. However, a lot of these projects are under CEPA, are categorically excluded, so I think we can get some time savings there and hopefully expedite the design and development process. And this is the Fuddel Boulevard funding scenario here. And I'll note, when we say that there's a one point five million dollar shortfall, what that means is that we can accelerate projects that are ready to go now and deliver those, and then apply for grant funds later as we move forward. So for example, we applied for a California Parks Grant to aid the San Dimas Wash because at this point, it's ready for construction, which is a lot of what grand units want to see. So those are the type strategies we can use to reduce that one point five million dollar deficit. So in terms of next steps, working with the COG to procure design and engineering for our projects and to take that process off. Once we have completed permitting and right-of-way for the San Dimas Wash, the COG will support us through construction. And as part of the process, we'll be going through a CEPA, sorry, CEPA, NIPA, which will start in early twenty twenty-four. It takes about a year, six months to a year, depending on the complexity of the project, and looking to start design, which we're getting into the actual engineering of these projects in twenty twenty-five. I did note, we are waiting on the Army Corps permitting, so that is the major holdup to the San Dimas Wash project right now. Looking to wrap up all of Phase One by twenty twenty-six, or in time to the MetroA line station. Kind of that, I can take any questions to the council.
Okay, bring it back. Do we have any questions?
Thank you, Stephen, for your presentation. Why NIPA, not the CEPA?
So California, if we're only using non-federal funds, we could get away with just CEPA. When we receive the Congressional earmark, that automatically federalizes pieces of the project. So for example, and also we're working with Army Corps Federal License, so if part of permitting, we have to go for NIPA, which is one of the elements that we're working through right now on the San Dimas Wash.
Okay. On the twenty-one million dollars, the math doesn't work out correct? It's more than a one point five million dollar deficit? We have to find it's more like seven point six million dollars. Can you explain that gap?
Yeah, that's a great question. So the one point five million is looking at what we define as the Phase One of the People Movement Project. So that would be Glendora Avenue, Fuddel Boulevard, first last mile, Little Dalton, and the San Dimas Wash projects. The longest trail or obviously the most expensive piece of the People Movement Project is the Big Dalton Urban Trail. That's about five miles of Class One or, you know, walking biking trails along flood control channels. That's the bulk of that seven million dollars. So that would be in a later phase of People Movement if we're able to get grant funds.
So this is actually two phases, or are you possibly one?
Possibly two or three. The ability is going to depend on, again, you know, COG has agreed to work with us on funding, you know, finding funds through the state's application program. There's a lot of Parks Grants that we're discovering. So yes, that will happen in a later phase. Right now, we're focused on projects that we've gone through, some type of outreach design on, and once that we know, we're able to deliver the kind of grant that's required.
Is there any ability to negotiate that ten percent from the COG? This is one hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and that's a lot of money, too.
Yeah, I agree. And, you know, we had a lot of discussion. So I probably didn't get enough background on that, too. This is a consortium of seven cities that came together. Glendora actually led the application process through that. And so that ten percent applies to each individual city. And ten percent is.
Each city?
Yeah, so each city pays ten percent of their grant to the COG, to administer the program. It does sound like a lot of money. However, when we think about doing things like construction management, quality control, that would be higher than the staff member, whereas we were having the COG just do that for this project as opposed to bringing a full entity, for example, to manage that. So we get savings that way. We also, I think, get a benefit from not having to administer the funds directly, paying time to get a grant. Myself or my colleague, we're the ones that will be doing grant reporting, annual analysis. The COG would be the ones doing it.
So the twenty-one million dollars that be contained is within the city of Glendora or beyond its borders?
The twenty, so those are two separate. So the COG's money only applies to Phase One right now. That twenty-one million dollars, we can work with the COG to fund later pieces of that, or we may just.
No, I know, but the twenty-one million dollars of identified work, is that within just the city of Glendora?
Oh, I apologize for misunderstanding. Yes, that's correct, especially within the city.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion by Mendon, a.
Here we have a motion by Mendel and a second by Karen.
I'll now conduct oral roll call. Councilmember Ellis?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Friedenbaum?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor Boyer?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, appreciate it.
Thank you, Stephen.
Okay, item number 11. We have an update on our water rates. They'll be presented to us by Chizum Abagalu. Oh, Chizum.
Sure.
I'm here, Mayor, City Council. Oh yeah, so today I'll be providing a brief update on our water rate study. Just a bit of background, this is one of the key objectives in our 2020, 2025 strategic plan. And that is the comprehensive water assessment, which was completed in April of this year. Shortly after that, we also completed the corresponding water rate study, which staff presented to this council during joint meeting with our Water Commission within the last month. So I just wanted to provide some of the key objectives and updates that will be undertaken over the course of the next several months leading up to implementation. During that joint meeting, one of the more prominent comments, feedbacks that we received was developing a comprehensive education outreach for our community. And so we have coordinated that effort with our Public Information Officer. So this table enumerates some of the key meetings that will be undertaken over the course of the next month or so. Starting now with Proposition 28, notice, and we'll talk a little bit more about what that encompasses in the next slide. But this is essentially a notice that talks about why we're increasing water rates or decreasing water rates or amending the water rates and really the implications of that. It also gives an idea of what those can expect coming forward. October 16th will be our coordinating council meeting, in which staff will present to this entity. October 17th will be our first community workshop, which will be held at the Bitwell Forum. And again, this is really just an opportunity for folks to engage with staff and ask any questions they may have regarding their water rate standards. And then at the request of Mayor Proton, we'll also be presenting at the Chamber of Commerce, Commerce, October 18th. And then we'll have our second Water Commission public hearing. This public hearing will be to consider recommending to this council to adopt the rates. And the City Council implementation and adoption will actually be November 28th. And the new rates will take an effect on January 1st of 2024. But what is not listed on this slide is, you know, there are some customers that will be significantly impacted by the new rates. And so staff will be having one-on-one meetings with those customers. Again, just to answer any questions they may have, ameliorate any concerns that they may have regarding the rate amendments. And also will be utilizing social media to advertise and outreach when appropriate. So this is really the slide that will be going out to our customers. That should be hitting mailboxes any day now. And again, this talks about what the water rates consist of. Gives some information about our water system operations, where we get our water from, and sort of the price amendment status associated with the water rate adjustments. And also it gives them a QR code where they can actually scan and get more information, such as locating which pressures on their residing to better calculate their rates. We'll also include a rate calculator, so based on his consumption, folks can input their numbers in and see what their proposed rates will actually be generally speaking. So that concludes my presentation today.
Okay, bring it back to council for any questions? None? Karen? Okay, I do have one question just to ask. This is our first consideration of a rate increase. When was the last rate increase that we put in place?
Correct. So the last comprehensive rate structure change was in 2016, so five years now.
Okay, I appreciate it. Okay, so.
I do have a motion.
We do have a motion by Michael, the second by Mr. Davis.
Yes, I will now conduct oral roll call. Councilmember Ellis?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Friedenbaum?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor Boyer?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, item number 12. Discuss the temporary signs in the public right of way. I understand, Adam, you're going to give us.
I am. So our city clerk, who's currently at a conference, is usually the individual that deals every election cycle with political signs in the right of way and what the questions are. Jeff back there is responsible for the sign code ordinance in place. And the chief back there and his staff are responsible for enforcement. So this is a topic that touches multiple departments. And every election cycle, the questions always come forward and the city council has asked exactly what are the rules? And so we thought we'd give the city council a brief update on what they are. So temporary signage in the public right of way is now what cities refer to as signs that could be political in nature, à la elections, real estate in nature, à la open houses, and any other sorts of advertisements for birthdays and yard sales and you name it. Because of various case law and because of rulings, we don't, there's no such thing as political sign ordinances anymore. Those don't exist. So we'll talk a little bit about that. So at a very high level, the city has chapter 19.24 of its municipal code, which is signage. As most signage is, it's split between both public and private signage. The laws and case law basically state cities can dictate time, place, and manner as it relates to businesses and signage. Signage on buildings, when you can put out temporary signage, grid openings, et cetera, those are the various sections. There are four sections that deal with either temporary signage in our code or direct signage in the, in the public, on public property. We have temporary real estate signs, single-family real estate signs, multifamily real estate signs, and temporary banners that have components to the right of way. Those are all various sections, but it's not even really here about public property. And that is one section of the code, 19.24.025. The, most of the sign code was written in 1980, brief update made in three in some sections and some in 2008, but largely remains unchanged. You know the old adage, what is new again? What is always new again? And I think what is always new again? So in essence, the only type of signage currently the city allows on public property in the right of way are signs no more than three square feet, less than 1,000 square, less than 1,000 feet where they're indicating something is, and less than two full signs, à la yard sale signs. And in some cases, it could be for a church, for example, if it's in a residential neighborhood. So when we get asked the questions during the political season of where my signs can be located, the answer is not on public property, which is your public right of way, in median, on Fuddell, for example, Lone Hill. We don't allow that. In fact, the only type of signage is what we just, just, we talked about. It is important to note that we have gotten a lot of questions about freedom of speech. So on your private property in a residential unit, for example, we saw, we got a lot of questions about an F Biden flag. Turns out that's protected speech. Nothing we can do about that. If you wanted to put a four foot by six foot sign in your front yard on your property that expresses your political opinion, that's under you. City doesn't get a chance to regulate that political speech. It can't be hate speech, it can't be obscene. There are various rules around those. Bill happy to share those with you. But to hear this evening, we'll really talk about public signage in the right of way. So given the city's limited rules surrounding public signage and its limited allowances for that, if you wouldn't mind going to the next slide. Well, I do have the control. Look at that. Alright. City council really has three options. So you can have staff move forward with an amendment to make minor changes to the sign code, chapter 19.24. For example, we could allow no signs whatsoever, including the three flood signs. You could direct staff to have a comprehensive update of our sign ordinance with the caveat that this is a pretty labor-intensive process. We want to look at the strategic plan, other initiatives that we have, and maybe move some things around to determine priority level. And of course, the city council always has potential option three, but there's no action, as oftentimes is the case. Any, any combination thereof is also before the council approval. So just thought it was important tonight, as we get forward to an election a little more than a year from now, a question evidently comes up, where my signs, and the answer is not on public property at any time, anywhere. They will be taken down and you'll be contacted and provided with that, too. We don't destroy those signs. So with that, Mayor, happy to turn it over for any conversation, answer any questions. Jeff, the chief, are here as well to answer any enforcement and/or sign code historical development options as well.
Appreciate it, Adam. Anybody questions? David?
Thank you, Adam. I, for one, don't think we can afford to tap or tax staff to go into a lengthy review. And there's more important things to be doing in the city. So I wouldn't want to do a complete overhaul. And we'll ask, we, we have a public right of, or private property ordinance that's three square feet for a sign. So many campaign-type signs or yard sale signs are typically that kind, that size frame?
It's actually three square feet in the public property.
Okay.
Yeah.
So in a private property, I can put anything as big as I wish?
Unless there's a public safety component or there's some other issues.
Fair enough, alright. Is there, I guess, how much work would be involved if we were to come back to some nominal size factor as opposed to these large billboards, four foot by six foot placards and things that occupy some properties during the campaign season? Is that a major effort or is that something that could make sense?
Nope, that would be done fairly simply. We did it recently for Metro Pal's birthdays.
But what about private property?
The only thing we can do on private property would be regulate size. Can't regulate content. We may be able to regulate size.
I wish that.
And, and we've done some of that before. So I have to give you some samples to work with if you want to.
I, I would think some kind of a sizing plot might make sense, but I would also hope that anybody ambitious enough to be a candidate and want to go through a process to have a public office would also be respective of each other's signs and, you know, placement of things.
You might assume a jury.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Well, I played nice when I did that. Yeah, okay.
Political signs disappear all the time.
Anyway, I don't see a whole lot of energy available to spend on it. Okay, thank you. Karen?
I would concur with not wanting to have staff do a lot of work, but if there's any common sense things, I mean, as my colleague just said, it would be nice if everyone employed that common sense. But as evidenced by comments I've gotten from the public is that people unfortunately don't always exercise that. In the last election, specifically the school board election, was one in which signage was a little ad nauseam. And so I think that's what people are asking questions about if we can maybe have any regulation on size and amount. And I think, don't we currently have some guideline as to when you can first begin to put signs out? Or is that just a best practice?
We can all get along best practice.
Yes, and some campaigns have already begun as of now and it's more than a year away. I would hope that signage doesn't begin popping up because that is a little much.
As, and I think, I think, to that example, I think Bill provides parameters, usually before an event, whatever that event is, the city can say, hey, there's temporary, temporarily allowed to have a sign of this size, X, Y, and Z before an event. You don't want to say specifically an election, it could be, or put on private property and there could be some size that we have to take a look at. But that could be a common sense approach, yes.
Yeah, so if there are some things that we could do, just because unfortunately people don't always exercise common sense on their own, if we could offer that advice to them in a way that would be legal and fair, that would be fabulous.
Appreciate it. Thanks, Karen. Any comment?
Yeah, I'm, I'm of the opinion of not really taxing staff to do much, because this is, it would be a huge overhaul. But option one, as far as removing signs in the public right of way, I think that would be a wise thing to do and it'd be fairly simple to do. So that would be wide direction. I'd like to see it happen.
I think the only one there that may be impacted is a church that has some signage in the public right of way. It's in a residential neighborhood. That.
But still on public property?
Yeah, I believe that's, I believe Glendora Church has a couple of signs in the public right of way that meets the definition of this chapter. But we'd be happy, if that's a version of council, to go see what's actually out there and come back to see if there's any allowances or we may have.
Is there any protection being a church for signs on public property?
It's a First Amendment protection that applies to all signs, church signs, all signs. Parish signs don't have quite that much protection, but even they enjoy First Amendment protection.
Right, but on public property, though, can we ban signs?
So we can prohibit signs on public property? You could have a blanket prohibition. That's not unusual. It's fairly common actually.
I'll give the brush line to say as, as an amendment.
Michael?
I would agree with that and I would agree with what Karen said. I, I would be more specific and say that 60 days prior to elections is enough. If you can't make your case in 60 days, then you probably shouldn't run. And it's clutter that we don't need. And I agree with what she said, so I don't know if there's any way that we could be specific in terms of when signs are put up. And, and also, will they be taken down in a, in a common sense prompt way? So those are the two thoughts that I have.
And that's on private property?
Uh, yes.
Okay, might it be a good idea that we ask that maybe staff can get back to us with some examples and recommendations that other cities have adopted for us to take a look at rather than just trying to guess at what we.
Sure, and, and just to make sure we're on the same page, that's strictly private property permits?
Private property, well, we have public property for signs on lampposts and like.
So we only allow, we only allow signs in the public right of way. When the content of such signs shall be limited to the name of the organization, directions to the property site. No sign shall be larger than three square feet. No more than two signs shall be posted within city limits of any, for any property site. No sign shall be posted farther than 1,000 feet from the boundary of the property site. Signs shall be posted on streetlight standards or street sign posts no higher than eight feet above the ground. That is the only signage on, on public property that we currently allow for general type of signage outside of a very specific thing like a real estate transaction.
Right, but a lot of those signs end up staying there for a long time.
Well, but I think you're talking about a wayfinding sign. I've seen a number of those in your city where it says, up the hill to the church of, the church of whoever.
I think a large, a lot, a lot of what we heard tonight was private property in residential neighborhoods, the eight foot by eight foot signs being up for you. I think that's the conversation.
But I didn't believe that we could regulate private property signs. We can't regulate content, but we could regulate time, place, and manner, particularly if they create light or public safety issues.
So what if they don't create public safety issues?
Uh, well, we'll have to give you some examples unless you look at it. Um, you're right, we, we are very limited in what we can do. But I've seen message signs, which just happen to have political content to them, where there were 30 such signs on a front lawn.
Let me just ask this question. Are we having any issues right now with signs?
We get questions every election. And we get people who hate them and people who love them, everywhere in between. But every, every election, we get asked this question, what's allowed, so.
Right, beyond the election cycle, do we have problems with signs?
The biggest complaint we have, we got about 40 emails over a two-week period on two F Biden flags that were in the city.
Most rare that we have these complaints.
It does happen on occasion, but generally speaking, it is rare.
So I think staff is anticipating next year and trying to give you some options so that those 40 email complaints don't come in next year. There'll be 32 new ones.
So can staff, and the recommendation sounds like the council, come back with some suggestions and options?
If we're okay with that.
If we're okay with that, I'd do that.
Okay.
I would do that, be the direction. Okay. Okay, well, that brings us to the end of our agenda for member statements. Anybody have anything? No, Karen? Okay, Adam?
Just a couple, lots of information this evening that was shared during a public comment, a couple of the updates, want to share a couple websites with you. Cityofglendora.org, words at forward slash finance reports provides you all the financial information, forward slash Dale Road for the project that was discussed at our meeting last night, homelessness plan for all the homeless information you've ever wanted to know about the city, community survey to get data going back to two thousand and eleven, including the two thousand and eighteen homelessness survey, and strategic plan for all the information we shared this afternoon.
Okay, appreciate it, Adam. If there's nothing else, I'd just like to, again, reiterate the fact that, you know, all of us as as members of the community need to stay engaged and keep a conversation going, and we'll we'll continue to do the best we can for the community. With that, we are adjourned at eight fifty seven.